Who is our secretary? It's Phil Mike, okay.
Yes.
So Mike will take some notes and so I will call the September meeting of the Planning Commission to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
One nation.
Under God.
Indisputable.
Liberty and justice.
I found it harder that time because I was hearing everybody else, but all right. So roll call, I guess I'll ask, maybe I'll ask Jennifer to do that because you've got the list there.
So Squatrito.
Here.
Buckley.
Here.
Fuller is excused, Darren.
Here.
Shingles.
Here.
Daring.
Here.
LaBelle.
Here.
And we have Rodney Nani, Peter Galenay, and myself, Jennifer Loveberry.
Great, thank you. So we last met on August 18th, and so you've got the August 18 minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections to the August 18 minutes? I noted one thing that I think is a typo on page two, item E. I believe the term that we appointed. Like to on the sidewalks and pathways committee is from is to 815 2022. It's not 2020, I know that.
It is. I can correct that.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Motion to approve as amended.
Our motion was by Buckley with a second by Thering. On favor, just say aye.
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 Our minutes are approved. Dog is barking and on to correspondence, board reports, and presentations. So Lisa's not here yet, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we'll skip that for the time being. And then Ryan, I don't remember, DBA hasn't met since we met or have they?
No, I can't even recall the last time we did meet. It's been quite some time actually, but I guess maybe that's good news.
Pre-COVID, actually.
Right, pre-COVID.
All right. So, so no, no updates from DBA, they just haven't had much activity recently. And then the other item is the, we discussed the appointments to the sidewalk and pathway prioritization committee last time. We have an applicant and there was some interest in hearing from the applicant. Is he here?
He is, I can promote him to panelist, give me just a moment.
Okay.
He will be with us in a moment.
All right.
I've asked him to unmute and to start his video.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, not verbally, but I can hear you.
Can you see me?
Briefly, but not anymore.
Out there.
There we go. So we can see you.
Okay.
So thanks for being here. We have your application, which we appreciate. I guess there was some interest now granted, a lot of times when we receive these applications, they're not very extensive and there's not a lot of, of, you know, people don't write a lot. But I guess it was brief enough that people wanted to hear a little bit more about your particular interest in this, this committee, just anything you'd like to say and then, you know, how do you stand for questions from the commissioners?
Okay, my name's Matt Mertz. I can tell you that this is completely self-serving. I use a wheelchair, have for 20, 30 years or so, and I am also legally blind, so I can't drive. So my mode of app, if I'm getting around and nobody's helping me, it's, bus are rolling down the sidewalk, so I'm very familiar with the sidewalks. And I can, just from personal experience, I can tell you spots where things aren't, sidewalks aren't very good, or, you know, simply by putting 12 foot of sidewalk in, you could end up making it so people can stay on the sidewalk for like another 150, 200 feet instead of having to go into the street. I. I tend to get around town a lot when I can. I don't like, you know, kind of like to get out and get about, so that's, you know, one of the main reasons that I wanted to join and I can, I'm down on Bamber, which is basically the next corner is the township hall. But if I ever wanted to go to a meeting and didn't want to, didn't have the opportunity to find somebody who could, who could transport me or get dial a ride to run. I can't get there. And it would be nice if there was sidewalk all the way from Bamber to Lincoln. For other reasons too, but that would, you know, so though, so that's my main, mainly why I'm interested. And I talked to people before and I've always said that whenever somebody puts in a sidewalk, they should take the person in charge of putting in the sidewalk, dump them in a wheelchair and tell them to go roll it. Because I've hit brand new easements coming from the street to get up on the sidewalk and the grade is so steep, I end up having to go up backwards. You can go up backwards on a wheelchair. It's easier to go up backwards than it is to go forwards, just the way they're built. So I think if you have any other questions, I'd be, feel free to answer them. You also see the top of my head whenever I have to look at anything on the keyboard or on the screen, because you might be able to see me, but at the little range that I am from the screen right now, I can't see you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to, I'm going to open this to any of the planning commissioners, if any of you have any questions for, for Matt Mertz.
Mr. Mertz, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your interest, because I think it's, obviously you say it's self-serving, but as a citizen of Union Township, you deserve to be served like everybody who is able-bodied. So let me say that I appreciate your courageousness in coming forward and wanting to serve in this role, not only to make it better for yourself, but also to make it better for other citizens of Union Township. So for that, I personally thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Phil, if I may?
Yeah, please Rodney.
I just, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. Mr. Mertz, you said that you, you, you get around town widely. It was out and about on the sidewalks. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
So you, so you really do have a unique expertise of our, of our sidewalk transportation system.
Yes, I can tell you where the bad sidewalks are and where the better ones are. I can tell you why you, why you roll on the north side of Pickard and not the south side of Pickard.
Thank you.
If I can, Phil.
Yeah, please, Brian.
Mr. Mertz, are you familiar with, and I would echo. Some of the other comments, I certainly, I think you could bring an interesting perspective to a committee like that. Are you familiar at all with kind of any of the work that's been done so far on the sidewalks and pathways committees and, and how they've, how, how the, kind of the policy and prioritization has been developed so far? Have you acquainted yourself with any of that yet, or?
I'm, I'm just starting to.
Okay.
Um. Then was certainly, you know, go over, try to go over a lot of the, see if I get some more information about the background and how, how different things are done. I, I know I did have, once I had a city commissioner explain to a point about whose sidewalks are whose, as far as city and township are concerned and some of the funding issues with that. But to be, you know, at best, I'm a novice.
Other, other questions that folks have? Well, if not, we'll proceed with our agenda. You're welcome to stay, we're going to be moving on, it'll be one of our agenda items. Anything else you'd like to say?
Just one, one thing, I will say that if you see me around town or if I'm at the township offices and, you know, you nod, you wave, et cetera, and I completely ignore you, I am not being rude, I just never knew you were there. My wife once talked to a neighbor who complained to her after we'd lived there for 10 years, what a rude guy I was because I never waved back to her. My wife had to explain to her that I never saw her. So that's my, so walk up and say hi and say who you are, otherwise you're just one more silhouette.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind, thank you. All right, so we will be, that'll be one of our agenda items tonight, so you're welcome to, as I mentioned, you're welcome to, to stay for that.
Thank you.
So the next item is approval of our agenda. So we've got, you've got your agenda in your packet, it's got two new business items. One is the aforementioned sidewalks and pathways appointments, consideration of those. And then the other is further discussion of the master plan implementation. Is there anything else that needs to be on tonight's agenda? I understand Rodney will have something under other business, but other than that. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
Motion was by Shingles, I saw a wave from Darren, so we'll include that as a second. Any further discussion? On favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? You're unopposed, I will declare that passed. So the next item is public comment. So at every planning commission meeting, at the early stages of the meeting, we have public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone would like to address the planning commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, they're invited to do so at this time. Basically, I guess, signal your, your desire to be recognized as included in the instructions and then we'll, we'll recognize you and, and I guess beam you into the meeting. So anyone who would like to address, make a public comment is invited to do so at this time. We just ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:15. Rodney, do we have any, we don't have any other audience, is that correct?
No, Mr. Mertz is our, is our member of the public tonight.
Okay. All right, well, unless he has any other item that's not on the agenda that he wants to talk about, I'm going to assume that, that there's no public comment, so we'll go ahead and close that back up at 7:16. There'll be extended public comment towards the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to our new business. And so the first new business item is possibly two appointments to the sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee. We have a, we have the vacancy that was created by Sherri Teal's resignation, and this is going to be for a term ending on August 15th, 2021. And we have an applicant, Mr. Mertz. And so. This one is open for motions, discussion, as your pleasure.
I move that we accept Matt Mertz as a member of the sidewalks and pathways committee.
The board.
The motion was made by Shingles to appoint Matt Mertz as a member of the sidewalks, sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee to complete a term ending 815 2021. And I heard several seconds, I saw it there, and so I guess we'll give it to Thering. Further discussion on the motion? I'm going to ask Jennifer to poll, to poll us, since it's an action item. She's muted.
Shingles.
Here, yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Squatrito.
Yes.
LaBelle.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
And Thering.
Yes.
Six to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Mertz.
Yes, congratulations and welcome, and we look forward to your contributions.
Thank you.
And then the next one is Jeremy McDonald has a term ending next month on 10/17/2020. And Rodney has been in contact with him and he's indicated his willingness and interest to continue to serve. So we have the option of reappointing him. I don't know what that term would be, does either Jennifer or Rodney know?
Two-year term.
Two-year term.
Okay, so a term into 20, fall of 2022.
Motion to reappoint. Jeremy McDonald.
So there was a motion by LaBelle to reappoint Jeremy McDonald to a two-year term, second by Darren. Discussion?
Would be very nice to have some experience staying at committee to carry on the message for all of us new people, so I think this is a good way.
That's, that's a good point, it's got five people on it, right? But two of them will be new. At least two. Other discussion? Okay, so I'll again ask Jennifer to poll us.
Daring.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Squatrito.
Yes.
LaBelle.
Yes.
And Shingles.
Yes.
Motion again carries six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, so we've, we've repopulated our sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee, so thank you very much. So the next item is the master plan implementation discussion, and there's some information in your packet. So I guess I will turn it over to Rodney and/or Peter to just kind of summarize what you've given us and then we'll proceed.
Thank you very much. This is a continuation of the conversation that we had during our last meeting about the action plan element of the master plan. You asked us to put together, kind of summarize the list of topics that individual commissioners had highlighted, and so you have a memo from, from me dated the 8th of September, and in that we listed those, there were several, seven sort of topic areas that were identified by various commissioners. And what we did from there, just to provide you with a tool that you can use if you'd like, for, for further conversation or, or making priorities or identifying things you'd like to work on, we took the, the project elements, the recommended projects that were in that action plan section of the master plan, and we grouped them together. In that action plan section, they're sort of scattered throughout, you know, there's housing elements all throughout that list. There, there's non-motorized plan elements all throughout the list, so we grouped them together under the, under the seven categories. And the line at the beginning is really just for you, if you want to put one through, one through 10 priority or put a star by things you really think are important, use it any way you wish. It was just to give you a tool to, to use if you need it. But that's essentially what this, the rest of the memo is, is, is the list from the master plan of all the projects where there were items that, that other groups are, are doing, like staff, we noted that, such as with the past Pathways Committee, Peter was instrumental in, in re-engaging the pathway, sidewalk and pathways committee. We have been working with them as, of course, tonight and last month, we had some appointments to that, and they'll be meeting on October 5th for their next meeting. So there are a few, few items like that where there are other agencies involved, the board or, and one case where, where an item that was in the, on the list, you have been specifically exempted from under the capital improvements program, where the township board of trustees has chosen to keep that authority to do a capital improvements program for themselves. Under the State Planning Act, the planning commission has, has the first responsibility, but the board can, can essentially keep that authority, take that authority for themselves, and they have. So even there, though, you do have a responsibility for reviewing major public improvement projects. So if the township was wanting to expand the sewer district or extend water lines into a new area of the township, or a new road or, or other major improvements like capital improvements like that, you have a role to play in, in making recommendations to the board on that. So that's, that's where I noted the last item on the list, is that, is that ability you have to make recommendations of those types of projects. So with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about the memo, but this is really just intended to respond to your request and to give you a tool to continue to look at what you would like to work on in terms of implementing the master plan.
Okay, thank you Rodney. Um, so, you know, we don't have a specific, you know, form for this discussion to take. One thing I might suggest would be, since, since these are broken out into categories, if anyone has a category that they just feel just rises above the others, or, or they just want to advocate for, we could, because I guess, I guess one, one option would be to try to identify some things to go ahead and do and try to accomplish in the near term here. But, you know, one way to do that might be to take it category by category. So, but I'm throwing, I'm throwing it out there for people, if anyone's got any other ideas or, or, you know, thinks that's a good idea or what have you.
Phil, I'm okay with going section by section as you described.
Okay, but I mean, does anyone have any particular sections that they want to start with, or do we just start in the order that they're listed? If not, we can start, we can take them in the order that they're listed. So the first one is housing. And so we've got work with senior citizen groups such as ICCA to assess and meet the housing needs of older residents, coordinate with CMU campus safety to address safety concerns regarding student housing, support agencies that provide low-cost housing, conduct a housing market analysis, this was discussed or mentioned at the last meeting, to determine needs and whether zoning currently matches with the market demand, and then evaluate residential and select business districts to allow wider variety of attached housing types. So do any of those items rise to the top of anyone's list of things that, you know, we should be getting on or getting to?
I would, I guess I would say that as far as the housing goes, in terms of what rises to the top of the list, for me is the housing market analysis. To me, that seems like it would inform our, be able to have a significant impact on our, in informing our future decision-making in that space.
Phil, if I may on, on that topic?
Yeah, please.
It is, it is, we're, well, we're close to being a very good time potentially for a housing market analysis, because we have the 2020 US Census data that will be becoming available. It will be next year, all likely, but it will become available to us, and that is going to have a wealth of housing data in it, it always, the detail of the census always does. And so it certainly, once that updated census information is available, could be a very good time to, to look at that issue.
What, when, the term housing market analysis, what does that specifically entail? And is that something that one would normally, you know, hire an outside firm to provide?
Yeah, certainly you can, that, consult, there are consulting firms that, that would certainly love to, to do that and have done that in other, other communities. The, the term varies widely, it, it's, there's a lot of things that we can look at with regards to housing. The, the biggest question that usually comes up is simply, can the people that live, that want to live here, that work here, can they find affordable housing here? Often it, it's tied to, for example, the younger generation, the young adults coming out of college or high school and trying to find, find affordable housing. How can we keep young, our young, younger, younger adults, the young families in the community? You know, like, like many communities, it is a challenge to find entry-level housing that fits the needs of, of, of that market, whether. of that market, uh, whether, whether it's young singles or it's young families. But that is a, an important cohort. We, if we can't, if we can't find, if, if they can't find housing, they, they're not going to stay. And, uh, and, and we have a, in Michigan, we certainly have an aging population, uh, in general. And, uh, so any, anything that can help make sure that we have, uh, good housing choices for, for the, you know, the younger, the younger adults, the young singles and the young married, uh, marriages. Uh, it can be a, uh, important benefit. So that's one of the, the focal points that a housing study could undertake. Another one is really just looking at the mix of housing options. And, uh, do we have a full range of, of housing options available? For all those that they may need it. And that, and that's looking at, at all the different possibilities, uh, that in terms of housing types and, and, uh, and the, the market for that. This kind of a study is probably something best undertaken in conjunction, certainly with, with the city of Mount Pleasant. Simply because we are this, it's the same marketplace. You know, uh, we are the donut and they're the hole in the donut, uh, essentially, but together we're, we're, we're one, uh, urban community. Urban to suburban community here. And so I thi- I think whatever we do probably should be done in cooperation with the city. But anyway, the, uh, I think the starting point for any, any analysis of housing is really is to, to simply investigate what are the issues? What are, what, what are, what are people finding to be the challenges related to housing in this community? And then build from there as to what we decide to do in terms of actually focusing, uh, any kind of a study or any kind of analysis of, of the data that will be available.
Fair enough. Uh, Mike?
Can we turn to our realtor experts and ask them? I'm sure there's a wealth of information there. Were able to meet the needs of the people who want to live in this town. Wouldn't you think that, Doug?
Well, um, I, I think, um, a lot of us just going to be driven by what, what people are looking for. I mean, obviously there's not enough, enough inventory anywhere in the whole United States right now. I mean, um, that's probably embellished a little bit, but the inventory is low everywhere and the demand is high. I would say, I think, I thought the city did a market analysis or a housing analysis a couple of years ago. I'm, I'm not sure. But we could check with them. I, I may be mistaken. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to say. I mean, it's really, what does a developer want to build? I mean, I think, uh, you know, we can approve all these things. Hey, here's what the need is. But if nobody wants to build it or nobody's willing to build it or take the risk, they're, they're not going to do it. Um, and I would say, for example, is, you know, the big push in the city is they want all these mixed uses. They want, you know, commercial down below and, and they want, um, the, uh, the residential up top. They want that component. Well, we, we, we did that for them. Um, because we were kind of forced to if we wanted to develop the site. And it's, it's not making any money and it, and it won't, even when it's, even when it gets a hundred percent full, it won't make any money because we can't, we can't, you know, justify, we can't get the rents that we need to support the cost to do it. So I think it's kind of a long answer to your question, but I think it's really going to be market driven. We can pay for an analysis, which would be helpful. To know all that stuff. I'd think it's really going to come down to, if we, if somebody were to build it, could they fill it? And, and that's from the developer side of it. They're going to run the numbers and here's what we want to do. And if the costs are too high and they can't make enough money, that it won't be done. I don't know if that completely answers your question, but.
Well, I think that, I mean, it's an interesting answer. I guess. And I, like Mike, I mean, I, you know, I, I guess as a realtor, you won't be happy to hear this, but I've been in my same house for 30 years and I have no plans to move. So I don't know anything about the real estate. Market in this town. But I guess a question I would have would be, are there, are there, are there people out there who are wanting a particular type of housing and it's simply not available? Now, I know you said the stock is low, but I mean, just a type of housing, you know, whether it's condos or whether it's a, you know, a small house or a medium house or large. Is there some underserved need that's out there that, that is, that you can point to?
Yeah. And I, I, I don't really know what exactly that would be. I mean, I can speculate that, you know, with, the baby boomers getting older, there's, you know, I've dealt with a handful of folks that are looking to downside. They want to sell their house and get into a condo. Cause they don't want to take care of the house. I've got families that are looking to buy homes for the first time. Never owned a home and they're looking to get into an affordable home. Now that could be anywhere from a hundred thousand dollar house. All the way up to 400,000 depending on how old they are and, and they're, and they're, and their income. So I mean, you know, right now it's just any, anything in any price range that's in, in, that's in good condition is going quickly. I, I mean, I just listed one over by the high school there. It's built in the 1975-ish right in there. And I mean, we went active on Friday morning and, at eight 30 in the morning, we had a showing set up by nine o'clock. I, I mean, and here we are Tuesday and we've already got three offers on the table. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So I would say anything in that 200 or less, or even 250 or less, it's going quick. Especially if it's in, you know, decent condition. So again, kind of a long answer to your question. I don't know exactly what's necessarily needed. Cause it just depends on who comes to us. I mean, we've got people looking for under a hundred thousand. I've got people looking for, you know, half million dollar house. Just kind of a, a, a big range.
I was just going to say, the other question is, you know, if, what, what if anything could the township do to, I mean, as you said, people are going to build when they, you know, feel like they're, they can sell something. Is, you know, what can we do to, to, you know, facilitate that? Or is there anything we're not doing that would, that would facilitate that? Or is it basically just the market forces at work? Uh, someone else was trying to get in though. I sort of cut them off. So.
Uh, James has his hand up.
Uh, yeah, James, go ahead.
You know, actually Phil, you kind of touched on what I was thinking is, boy, if there's a way we could figure out, what people were looking for and what type of price ranges might, might incentivize a contractor to start, some sort of project that would wrap around that. But, you know, I don't know. It's all part of the analysis part. I, you know, you're not going to get people from somewhere else to say, well, I'd move to your town. If I could have a condo for under $200,000. I don't know what's the likelihood of that, but, Bill, you, you really hit on what I was actually saying.
Other comments on housing?
Phil, I had a, I guess just a comment. I'm sorry. I was trying to raise my hand and I, for some reason I can't find it on my screen again where, where I can electronically raise my hand. So. I think one of the things that I guess, uh, when we discussed it last time, my expectation was, um, I mean, and that's good input, uh, that we've gotten so far in terms of, you know, where the market might be going or, or what the mar- market might be needing. I guess, um, one of the things that I was hoping that would come from a study like that is to tell us. We had kind of talked about, um, I, I think there's some conversation about what the, 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 um, form-based zoning that the, um, city had taken on and what those, some of those expectations were. To me, I thought, I, I guess I was hoping that a market study would help tell us ways in which that we need to be, not just what the demand is, but ways in which that we need to be flexible in terms of, um, uh, how we're, you know, crafting our zoning and, and how we're, um, proceeding with our land map in the future and that sort of thing. And I, I don't know. I guess I can pose that question here. Is that something that, would be considered maybe part of that analysis? Or is that maybe a, a kind of a separate issue?
Rodney, do you want to, uh, jump in on that?
Or what? And certainly anytime you're, you're, uh, kind of looking at the horizon, looking long range, uh, planning wise and thinking about what, what, uh, what you want the community to be like down the road. Having that data, uh, is, can be very helpful. If we don't, we, we can't, we can't do that, that, uh, that long range planning in vacuum. Otherwise we're really just guessing. So having, having that kind of analysis is certainly an important component of, of a master plan type project or thinking long-term about, about, uh, as you said, about, but, where, how do we, how should we be zoning? How should we be planning the future for the community? I think for this element, I mean, we have a, we have a solid master plan. The master plan, uh, includes language about housing. That issue was looked at at the time, not, not, uh, not in depth through a full marketing analysis, but certainly was, it was considered. What, uh, I think if we were to do anything further at this point, my suggestion would be is to, first of all, look at this as an opportunity for education. You know, you may want to just, you know, Doug was very helpful tonight with, with the, uh, off the cuff, those short presentation. You may want to consider inviting, some other, uh, experts in, in the field, whether it be land developers or, uh, folks in the, you know, in the housing industry, uh, various sorts, whether it's student housing or, or, uh, whatever that may be. Yeah, there are, there are certainly some experts in the region that, that are advocates of, of, uh, certain types of housing development and, and, that you may want to consider. I just sat in on a, uh, breakfast this morning. The Middle Michigan Development Corporation has a quarterly breakfast and, and because of COVID, it was online. And one of the presenters was a, uh, group from, uh, the tri-cities area that, uh, has been focused on what they refer to as the messy middle. Housing. That's basically duplexes to, uh, kind of, uh, low, medium density, multiple family, uh, type housing. That, that is a, is a problem. There's not, not nearly enough of that particular range of housing types in the community. And they advocate for small projects. And, uh, actually, and actually some of them are developing, uh, infill type projects in, in communities for that type, to fill that market niche. It was an interesting presentation. I'm sure that they would probably be willing to come and present it to you if you're interested. But anyway, that, that would be my suggestions. Maybe take advantage of the, the opportunity to invite some people to make, presentations to you on these topics, just so you can learn a bit more about, uh, where things are. I think certainly inviting the, the, the home builders, inviting the real estate, in representatives to come in and, and, uh, give, give you their perspective, I think would be very helpful. And from that you may then, begin to identify where you would like to go with any kind of further analysis or, or, or implementation.
Thank you, Rodney.
Well, I like that idea. Other thoughts from people on housing? So, um, do you, do you want to, and of course I'm always, you notice the pattern here. We discuss and then we ask the staff to do stuff and we discuss and we ask the staff to do stuff. But, um, would you, Rodney, would, uh, do you want to give some thought anyway to, uh, folks that we might, uh, invite to do that sort of thing?
I, I can do that certainly for you. I, I, I think number one, I could check with that, that group that just presented this morning and see if they'd be interested in, you know, making a presentation to you. But, uh, I'll, I'll take a look at that and.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think that the idea that, that, you know, we can decide ahead of time, you know, all these different things to do. It seems like the first thing would be to collect the information and, and get a better sense of, of whether there are any issues that need to be addressed.
And I, I would also put it back though on, on you as members of the committee or planning commission. Each of you have your own network of people that you know, uh, whether the university or the real estate in, uh, industry or, or, uh, land development industry, whatever that might be. If you are aware of somebody, maybe take a moment, you know, to, uh, go and talk with them and say, would you be interested in, coming in and speaking for a few minutes, uh, you know, to the planning commission about what you know, kind of sharing what you know. Because I think with collectively, we, we have a very large network of potential people that can, could, uh, you know, could be of assistance.
Uh, James?
If we do that, I think it's a great idea. Um, I would definitely like to hear some input from people around our community. So if we do that, where we find a developer or, or something, what kind of question, to be consistent, what kind of question should we ask? Or would you like, would we like to see asked? You know, like, for example, if they could, develop a project, what would, what do they think would be a good project for Union Township? Is that a question? Is there, not that we can't ask other questions, but if maybe we can kind of get, maybe we find we're going to get similar answers, which, in a sense is the answer we're looking for. Maybe we're going to find several different answers. I don't know, but. Just a thought.
I mean, I would tend to think one thing you'd want to ask would be, especially for people that have been around here a while. Are there, are there problems or limitations in preventing you from doing something that you'd like to do? Structural problems or, you know, zoning issues or what have you? You know, we sometimes get that type of feedback from some of our applicants at, at project stages, but, you know, but that'd be what I'd be interested in knowing certainly.
Mike, Mike Darren has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not, yeah, I should be, I should be like toggling back and forth. I'm, you guys, who's, who's at the top of my screen is changing, but Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. I think I'd like to know from, uh, realtors to, anybody in the realm of development. Whether or not they've been approached by somebody that would like to develop, whether it's housing, whether it's, a commercial below, residential above, you know, has there been anybody come into town that has, looked to throw money into Mount Pleasant, but our zoning did not allow it. Those are really the questions we're trying to ask. Because really from a control standpoint, all we can control is giving them zoning for an opportunity. And I know that some of our zoning is quite limiting. Um, I think that, uh, we've had that pointed out to us a couple of times and we've tried to do something about it. But, those are the questions that I think I'd like to hear. Is it, is it senior condos that, uh, people want? Is it they want, um, more development out of town, uh, but still have the capability of getting into town? Yeah. Just those kinds of questions. But I think the people that get asked those questions are probably realtors. And look, and, and people looking for zoning in the area or, uh, available property in the area with the right zone.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Uh, Stan?
You know, I know we, we've had some discussion in the past about, um, building, uh, related to apartments that were specifically targeting students. And then we started talking about the over inventory of those apartments that are creating blight. Obviously in some of the older apartments, because now there's an oversubscription in terms of the number of apartments available. What kind of assessment could be done to better guide us? And I, I, I know right now there's no building that's taking place, but if we see a, increase in the student population, will that return again? Because we've had several developers to come before us, um, within the last five years, asking for, permission to, to, to build, um, new inventory. And now there's this huge oversubscription. I don't think there's any question about it. Uh, so now we're seeing everything from housing turning into section eight, which was not originally the intent. But, um, it's creating all kinds of problems. So what can be studied there to better inform us related to, what we may or may not do, uh, with approving new developments in the future? Cause it appears like the single family is, single family units are under subscribed at this point. But the, multifamily is not. So it's a, just a thought. So just a, just a thought.
Ryan has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I, I guess reinforce, I think that we've heard some, some good points out of Commissioners Darren, Shingles and LaBelle. And so I, I kind of want to, you know, to me, I think that, you know, having the market study and even as I look at the housing, kind of the action plan here, it seems like this market analysis is kind of the, the linchpin to, to kind of looking at these other areas that fall under that. You kind of want to have that detailed information as well. I, I, I think that it's, the, the thing that I keep going back to, one of the comments that Commissioner LaBelle had pointed out in a previous meeting was that there was some, you know, some specific zoning issues in terms of, you know, you know, appearance or materials or those sorts of things that made it expensive to build the type of housing that, that was profitable for them, but also was, that was needed in this, inside the city limits. So I am interested in kind of knowing how we avoid some of those, you know, pitfalls, or if there's, if we are kind of unknowingly or unwittingly standing in the way of, you know, some, you know, good sustainable development. At, at the same time, you know, there's it, it's important that we hear from people that are, you know, more than just developers is to Commissioner Shingles' point in, in terms of, you know, what is it that we truly need versus what might be, you know, profitable, profitable in the short term, if you're kind of cannibalizing renters or tenants or, or buyers from other areas of the city. And I'd also like to see how we balance and whether that comes from, you know, discussions with developers or the market analysis or, or some other groups, how we balance the maintenance of, you know, green space and, and kind of redevelopment as well, and how we can pave the way for that sort of thing. So there's, so there's interest among our, our local developers to, to redevelop existing spaces as opposed to just eating up more and more green space within the township. So I think those are all good points that people are making. It's, I think we're on the right track in terms of this conversation.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments on housing? So what I'm hearing is, you know, we probably want to get to the point of, of a market study at some point, but we may want to hear from some folks also along the way that may have some, some information that might be of some value to us. So, and I don't see any of this as being, you know, we make a decision and then we're done. It's going to be an ongoing discussion. So if no one else has anything to add on housing at the moment, we can move on to non, non-motorized plans. So anything in, in this group on, on that next page that jumps out at people?
I think I'd like the, maybe the pathways committee sidewalks and pathways to work with the road commission where we're trying to prioritize sidewalks and pathways. And in some cases, it doesn't make sense. It kind of goes back to an earlier conversation I had with you about, you know, putting sidewalks along a farmer's field. It doesn't make sense to ask them to put a sidewalk or pathways in there because it cuts out of their income. But if you were to utilize some of the setback on the road and get the road commission to buy into putting in bike lanes for connectivity between sidewalks. Not duplication of effort, but just to serve the priority of the sidewalks and pathways that we're intending to do. So I, I'd like to see that committee maybe have a meeting with the planning commission and see what their future development looks like. See what their plans are for enhancing roadways with bike lanes and see if it matches up with any of our development for sidewalks and pathways.
Well, of course, you're going to be our liaison between those two now, so you'll be able to report to us back and forth as well. We may, we may want to have a joint meeting as well. What about the, what about updating the inventory of sidewalks and bike lanes from the, if, if the last inventory is from 2011, that would seem to be a little on the outdated side. I don't know how much change there's been since then, but certainly I would think you'd want, you know, the latest information on what we do have.
I'd just like to add something to Commissioner Darren's comment. The, in regards to bike lanes and reconfiguring, I, I think they, they tried, the city wanted to do that in a portion of Pickard Street there near Mission, I think. I want to say it was from Mission to kind of the Union Township east to the border there. And, and one of the residents of the city put a, put a Facebook. I don't know what you call it, but basically got a lot of pushback on that, that, that type of configuration. So the city opted not to do that because the Pickard Street was going to go down to, I think, a turn lane, kind of like what they did with High Street. So they were going to do that at Pickard and there was a, there was a lot of outcry on, on that against doing that. And so the city opted not to do that. So more of this, you know, food for thought.
Called it, they called that a road diet.
Yeah, that's what it was. I hadn't heard that before. I, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty funny.
Gentleman from Ohio, I can't remember his name now, coined that term a number of years ago. And it, it's the idea of basically creating space for bicyclists and such within the existing road width. And so you do that by cutting, cutting the lane up typically.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm not saying we don't do any of it, just saying in that particular area with the high traffic, you know, the public didn't really support that, but it, it would most likely work in some other, some other spots for sure.
I think, you know, part of the issue we have in this community is that, is that there are relatively few through streets that you can use to get from one side of town to the other side of town. And so I always get nervous. I know, I know there's an item on here and encourage the road commission to support the creation of complete streets that consider the needs of vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians equally. All right. And whenever I read something like that, I have, I think about these, these roads that are painted with the share the road. And it's got the bicycle and it's literally in the middle of the street. And I guess I assume that, that the intent is that they really do share the road, which means if you're behind a bicyclist in a vehicle, you, you proceed at the rate that the bicyclist happens to be pedaling. And I think that, you know, because, because if you want to go from the southwest corner of the township to the northeast corner of the township or vice versa, there's really only a couple of ways you can do it. I'd personally like to see more emphasis on, on bike paths that are off of the main streets. You know, on side streets or other streets where, you know, if you want to bicycle some distance, you can do so safely, but you're not competing with the truck traffic and the rest of the traffic on, on, on Pickard or, or Isabella or, or, you know, 20 or what have. That's my rant for the moment.
Phil, Ryan has his hand up again.
Yes, Ryan, please.
I hate to keep going back to some sort of market analysis, but you know, when I look at an updated inventory of sidewalks and bike lanes from 2011 non-motorized plan, and I, I don't have the 2011 non-motorized plan in front of me, so I'm not, I'm not entirely, I don't recall exactly what that contains, but I guess, you know, one, one of the, we've had anybody that's been on the commission for a while can recall the lengthy conversations we've had about sidewalks and where they go and when they go and, and the policy that did kind of arise from that, from the committee and whatnot. But one of the things I felt like we're lacking, at least since I've been on the commission, is that we don't really have much in the way of expert data to back us up on, are, are we making the right decisions about? Even, I, I know that we have one, I guess, one line here in our non-motorized plan that was the talks that mentions amending the sidewalk ordinance to remove waivers for sidewalks in commercial districts. I, I don't know if that's the right or wrong thing to do is to remove those waivers, but I, I guess is there a way or is it, is it possible for us to, to get some outside expert analysis of that and, and give us some guidance on that and say, well, this is where you should prioritize and know this is, this isn't a good thing or a good piece of criteria to use, or this is a good piece of criteria to use. And, and so we can again, have a little bit of data to start with as we kind of start to look at what are we doing in specific, you know, roadways? When is it more appropriate to use a pathway as opposed to a sidewalk, you know, all these different things? And again, if, if, if there's, if we can glean, you know, still pertinent information from the 2011 plan that, that sheds some light on that, then I guess that's fine. But if, I mean, that's almost a decade ago now, and I guess it will be in a few months. So does it make sense for us to to seek out that type of expertise?
Other comments on, on this whole topic of the non-motorized issues? Scroll back a little.
Phil, if I, if I may, just a couple of quick things. What I will say is that the, the 2011 plan is, is worth a read. This is a very thorough document and it has data and recommendations in there that I think certainly are still very relevant to, to, to us today. It was a perfect, obviously it has aged. It was made for made at a different time, but, but I, I do believe it is, it certainly has great relevance today. So I certainly would take a look at it. It's available on our, our website. And it is definitely worth, worth reviewing. And as I said, I think there's, there's certainly good, good information there for you. You know, this, this item, all these items that, that you have here are, come from your master plan. They all come from the analysis that was done as part of the master plan. They come from the analysis that was done by the planning commission and deliberation and discussion that happened at the planning commission as you're developing that plan. And so there is, there is an expertise behind each of these, these recommended projects that should be considered and truly take a look at the master plan. There is some language there as well that kind of backs up these, these ideas. The other thing I'll say, it's certainly, it never hurts to have expert help and, and certainly that's part of the reason why we are here as staff. To provide expertise and trying to figure out how do we make a decision on some of these planning issues. And that's certainly an element that I can help you with and is, as you identify questions that you'd like to have answered and identify, if we identify issues that we'd like to explore, I can certainly help you to, to, to look at how best to, to get from, from A to B, to get from, from the questions to, to identifying the, the preferred responses. But the other thing I will say is that, that when it comes to sidewalks and pedestrian topics, we heard tonight from a true expert, Mr. Mertz. And I will say that another type of true expert, quite frankly, are youth. I've often heard that the best planners are third graders because they see the, see the community at, at the local level. They, they're, they don't have cars yet, so they're not thinking in an auto centric manner. They have to get around by bicycle. They have to get around by walking. They have to get around by getting rides somewhere else. But they also are, are, you know, they see, they view the community at neighborhood level. And, and so they have a kind of an expertise that, that we that are, are in our cars all the time going places, we sort of have forgotten in some cases. And I'm, I'm an avid bicyclist, so I, I bicycled through this community. I, the comments earlier about the challenges of getting from one side to the other, I agree that they are, it is tough to, to get from one side of town to the other on bicycles. And to do that safely. And so as we can take steps to improve that, that's a good thing. But I will say this, that, that, you know, there are experts and some of them might be third graders. Talking to, to young people about how they, how they view their community, what, what would be important for them to, to improve it. You can learn some amazing things. I, I did this exercise. I attended a homeschooling conference. We, we homeschooled our, our kids when they were younger. And we, we had a conference where a whole bunch of homeschooling families got together. I think there was a thousand people there. And I got to run a, a class on, on planning, on neighborhood planning using these kids. And we did this exercise. It was called Plan a City and it was some tools that we had to, where they could look at this, this topic. And I was amazed at the insights that these, these, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12 year olds had about, about their community and, and ideas on what, what was important to do. And I, I'm quite frankly, the things I learned from that, those exercises, I have continued to apply in my professional life. So, you know, experts come in all sizes.
Actually, there's, there's, you see this on campuses and elsewhere. There's a school of thought that says you shouldn't build a sidewalk until you see the paths. And so you do it where people walk.
If I could just add on to that a little bit, I guess clarify, I guess one of the things and I, I guess I'll just put it this way. I, I feel like as a planning commissioner, I'm a little bit separated from, you know, providing that input a little bit. I mean, I, I understand we have our, our sidewalks and prioritization committee and I, I appreciate that. I feel like there's a little disconnect between, just as Rodney kind of pointed out, we have a wealth of information. It sounds like, I mean, I know from our master plan, I was involved in that, but from the 2011 plan as well. It feels like maybe I would, I guess I would appreciate, or I think the planning commission in general would benefit too. We've talked about having some sort of joint meeting where we have the sidewalks committee together and that we can look at things together. Obviously the sidewalks committee is, is its own committee and we've, we've enabled them to, to assist us in this space, but I, I would like to see, I guess, some level of collaboration there where we're kind of looking at, you know, what we have done so far and where, what we're maybe where we're going and, and look at that and see how it does balance and weigh against the, the, the measures that we have taken with the master planning and the, and the is existing work that we have. So maybe I guess that's a better way for me to, to, to say that is to, is to say that maybe we should make a priority of, of interacting more with the committee itself.
Okay, thank you. We know where we would do it. We would do it right here on Zoom. I guess I wanted something that kind of jumped into my mind. I was looking in, on, again, on this list and right in the middle, it says, complete the plan pedestrian sidewalk and pathway system, especially to fill in gaps and connect neighborhoods with destinations like schools, parks, et cetera, et cetera. It seems like most of the time, you know, certainly with the sidewalks, it's like, you know, you have to wait, you, you wait till a development comes along. And if it's in the right spot, if it's a priority, the sidewalk gets built. The only one I can think of offhand where the sidewalk actually got built by the township because it was, because it was deemed so essential was Bluegrass. Right? Several years ago. And I guess I'm wondering if one of the things that might come out of both the, the committee and, and us working together would be to identify if there are any critical points where you, you know, we really should have a pathway or really should have a sidewalk. And, you know, use the last item, which is ask that, you know, put the, put those on the list of capital improvements and maybe, maybe they'd get built more quickly that way. Cause otherwise you're just kind of waiting around for something to get developed in that area and have them be added that way. Now, I don't know how much money the township has sitting around, but you know, that thought occurs to me.
Maybe this is a good time to kind of give you a little bit of background. I know Denise talked about what the sidewalk committee did at their last meeting in June, where they identified specific priorities for, for 2021. I shall back up a little further. Part of that, they had identified in earlier meeting, they had identified projects for 2020. And just to give you a reference point, they they had focused on completing missing sections of sidewalks on Broomfield. And Bluegrass primarily. And and also completing a short stretch of sidewalk on Lincoln. Near the township hall. The projects that they identified for 2020 are currently in the construction planning stage. We a civil engineering firm, Row Professional Services is. They have drawn up plans for constructing those sidewalks on those roads. And they are scheduled. If they stick with their schedule, they're they're scheduled to start the the bidding, the invitation to bid on those projects next week. So the township could potentially see construction bids soon after. I think they have a September 24th was the timeframe for that to start the bidding process. So we're looking at projects that that hopefully can still be completed this year. And that would be completing missing sections of sidewalks, including a very famous pathway. That comes up a lot in township board meetings. Which is the the pathway by the Red Lobster down at Mission and and Bluegrass going up that hill. And that's part of that that plan is to complete that section of missing sidewalk there. So that's 2020, 2021, the sidewalk committee in June. Identified and Denise talked about this one of the previous meetings identified focusing on Remus Road. Between Bradley and and Lincoln. Completing the sidewalks there. So that would that would extend from the city line west to to Lincoln Road. Sidewalks on both sides of the road. And then and then looking at at extending sidewalks north on Lincoln on the west side of Lincoln. To complete the connection from from Remus Road north to the township hall in McDonald Park. That's that's the the what they recommend for 2021. That request has been incorporated into the requested budget. That was something that I was working on in the past few weeks. We'll have to see if it survives the budget process, but those those projects were. Requested to be funded. As part of the 2021 budget and and so that so there are, there's definitely sidewalk work going on. The the board. Has has made sure there's money in the in the general fund budget for for sidewalks and our economic development authority. Has provided funding for sidewalks within within their jurisdictions as well. So. As as projects are identified, they they do get funded.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that information. Are those? Are those like a shared cost where there are assessments involved or are those the township is just footing the bill?
These are all cases where the township is footing the bill. These are especially the the 2020 projects finish up the gaps on Bluegrass and Broom Broomfield. These are spaces where the property is either already developed or it's not expected to be developed anytime soon. And so we want to make sure that connection gets made. You know, certainly in Bluegrass, those those walk paths are very heavily used. I am amazed at the number of people that are out and about. On those walking paths. I've been having a conversation with. Sam's Club and Walmart. Sam's Club would like to to do some work on their property. It's going to be coming to you. For site plan approval and we've been having a conversation about sidewalks. Because there are no sidewalks in front of Walmart and Sam's Club. They were developed before the sidewalk ordinance. And so we've been talking about trying to get those in and. And they've been, well, why, you know, why do we need them there? And, you know, nobody uses sidewalks. And I said, oh, no, you caught there. Look, they're out there. They're out there using them. You know, and and I said, the sidewalk connection along along Encore Boulevard is as important as the road connection. So, you know, those conversations definitely are taking place. The there are a few. Cases where we've had development projects that have had waivers in the past. Where those waivers were were rescinded a couple of years ago and Peter has been diligently working on trying to get those. Those business owners primarily to get those sidewalks finished. He's been spending a great deal of time working with those those owners to try to get those pieces of the puzzle done as well.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, so I guess. Here's the thought. So the sidewalks and pathways committee is scheduled to meet October 5th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so maybe maybe that committee will meet and have some discussion and. You know, that we might perhaps schedule a joint meeting at some point after that. To discuss some things and. You know, I mean, work work towards, you know, priorities prioritizing some things. Wasn't very eloquent, but I guess I'm trying to wrap this up. But other other question or other comments on sidewalks and pathways? We're good with that? Okay, so I'm keeping watch on the time also because we have a couple of other. At least discussion items that are not connected to this, but. Let's look at the access management plan. Part and then we'll decide whether we want to continue beyond that. But I have a question for Rodney, which is. Some of these things in here, it says implement recommendations from the 2006 access management plan. For Pickard and Remus Roads during site plan review. My question is. Whenever we've whenever we've had a situation where. We've had a proposed development where it looked like some sort of connector was possible. That either. You know, the answer was either, well, you know, we can't get a hold of the other property owner or the other property owner is not interested or etc., etc. What? What can we compel people to do? We can't really compel them to do those things, can we? Or can we?
There's two pieces to the puzzle. We don't control the road network. That is, those are outside agencies where it's M dot or or the county road commission. And those agencies have their own rules about whether and where and whether. People can access their right of way, putting in a new driveway. So one of the things we can do is to is to work with those agencies. To to try to better coordinate things. So, for example. You know, if we're trying to get a cross access connection and and the road agency saying, oh, yeah, you can have two driveways, no problem. Well, they're not going to want to do a cross connection because they can get the driveway approaches they want. But if if, say, the road commission, for example, says, oh, no, we're only going to give you one driveway. Even if you have a, you know, a shopping center site or something. Then all of a sudden that cross connection to the neighboring property where there's a second driveway, it becomes much more important. So I think. That's a piece of the puzzle is is trying to to coordinate the policies between us and the county and state. The bigger one, I think, is certainly something that we can continue to look at our our ordinance, our updated zoning ordinance. I think there's some additional language related to access management. It's something we can certainly look at further. Going forward from here is whether we do something maybe more with it. We cannot. We cannot prohibit entirely the road commission or the state highway department, the township. We can't. We can't prevent somebody from accessing the roadway. But we can essentially define how they access it. To help protect the the function of the road and and to maximize safety. For motorists entering and leaving the road there. So. That's where the language and the ordinance is, I think, is important in terms of giving guidance. As to exactly how things are done. From. From the perspective perspective of site plans. This is an area that it's important to me. I know it's also important to the city. I was having a conversation. I meet monthly with. Jacob Kane, the city planner and and. We had a conversation that our first meeting, we had a conversation about about a. Connection across between a city and a township property. And the challenges, the city wanted it. Property owners didn't and. And so it is, I told him then that I said here as well that this is important to me too. Those cross connections are. Are typically easy to do from the perspective of it's not, it's pretty painless for a developer to provide it. As long as you can get the easements and such back and forth. But it really just takes a little bit of push. I think that the more we can. Encourage, cajole. Do our best to persuade, even if we can't require. We can often. Push people in the direction of doing something like a cross connection, even if they're reluctant initially. Where it will ultimately be a benefit, not only to them, but also to the community. This is not about taking away anybody's rights. It's not about but. Taking control away. It's really about connecting things together and more effectively. So it's a lot of it is just to keep keep the pressure on to to make these kinds of changes. One of the things we've done, and I'll close my comment with this, with the new site plan process. Our current under the current ordinance, which is in effect for for, I think, five more days. And we'll talk about that in a minute. That's that's the item that I was filled to to add me on for. But. Under the current ordinance. The planning commission is the last entity to see the site plan. If the first thing that happens is all the outside agencies have their reviews and comments and. And changes and then you see it. Well, by the time you see it, the plan is is kind of set in stone. It's hard to get changes made. Because changes have already been made to satisfy the county or the state or whoever. Under the new ordinance, you are, this is the intent anyway, that you are actually the first to see it. You would see a preliminary site plan before it goes to these outside agencies for their review. And so the goal would be is to make it easier. By you seeing it early on, easier to to identify changes that you would like to have made to those plans before they kind of get set in stone. Through the development process. So hopefully that will be of help going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Rodney, are you the cross connection that you talked about with Jacob? Was that from the JCPenney to the Target?
Yes, it was.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's that's the ones that I think of are where the driveways have already been built. But having a cross connection would be great because you you fewer, you know. People wouldn't be forced to go back onto the main road. But it just seems like there's always. There's always something, at least in the ones we've dealt with. We had one up by. Out by Encore, the the one on the north side of that. Of Bluegrass at some point and there was some issue. And so that's why I was asking about, you know, what leverage do we have and so on. So other comments from folks on on access management?
Hey, Rodney, just had a question about the the last point that. You brought up about the new ordinance, the site plan will come in front of us a little sooner. Now. The the project that the four hacks did out on River Road. Is that is that something that was kind of that happened similar where they'd gotten all the approvals from the outside agencies and it came in front of us and. We're like, well, you really can't do this. And then had they had to go back and get all these approvals again because of that? Is that is that kind of what you're talking about?
That is a poster child for, yes, it yes, it's exactly what happened. They got all these approvals and they came to the township, but we said. You can't do it that way. It was just this very strange driveway setup. Yeah, yeah. And so they had to go back and do all the outside agency approvals again after they set up the private road.
Yeah, so hopefully this will help streamline it for them and save the developer, you know, from having to do something twice.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for trying to streamline it and make it easier for developers. I mean. Whether it's me or somebody else, it just, I think, if the process is somewhat smooth for for these guys or gals. Then then I think it just makes it more desirable for them to come to the township and say, hey, I want to do something here. You know, certainly the city, the city is. I don't want to say they're running people off. They're just they're they're not being very amenable to people wanting to do stuff. And then on top of it, when they do want to do stuff, they're being told what they need to do. And, you know, I like Jacob as a person, but for that for that whole situation. He's he's not helping the situation and he's making it worse. So and then in regards to the township, I'm I hopefully that we can be more amenable because again, you know. I I hate to say this, but I continually hear from people in the township that. You know, I'm not, I'm not doing anymore there. I'm tired of dealing with them. I'm tired of dealing with how hard it is to get anything done. So I I'm just saying is that this is what I continue to hear. I've been here six years now and I continue to hear this and. I I'm hoping that that can get turned around in some fashion. You know, fairly quickly and it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of work on everybody's part to to fix all that. To fix that 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 reputation. So hopefully, you know, everybody can help make that change and and get to get things moving forward in a in a more streamlined fashion. And if this ordinance is just step one, then that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. So anything else on access management? I feel like this has been a good discussion. I'm also feeling like I'm not. I mean, I look at this as a as a long range or an ongoing sort of thing. So my. My inclination is unless anyone has any anything that they really want to take up tonight on on the remaining items on this list would be to to, you know. Have it be something we continue the next time, but. It is open for discussion if anyone's got anything either on access management or wants to discuss anything below it. And seeing no one waving at me. I will assume that that we're we're good for now. I want to double back since Lisa was able to join us a while ago now, but. We skipped the. Trustees report, so I want to go back to that. If you've got anything.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, at our last meeting. We did a second reading to adopt the zoning ordinance update list of additional revisions, corrections. The second reading. And adoption of the ordinance. Amendments of the official zoning map. Introduced and conducted the first meeting of the tax increment for the West DDA. And then we. Hold on. Approved the renewal of the manager's contract for another year. Are we? Okay, we just kept it as is. No changes made to it. Just another year. Add it down. I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Or trustees issues? Would you say that? There's been no change in the situation with regard to. The applicant pool for our open position on the commission?
Don't believe we received any other applicants.
Okay. All right. Well, again, I again remind commissioners that if you do know someone. That you think would be good to encourage them to consider applying. Since we're now, we're now eight when we're all here. We're not eight tonight. We're seven tonight, but when we are eight, there's the. The danger of the dreaded tie votes, which we don't want to go back to. But thank you for that report. So at this point. If we are in agreement to kind of conclude that master plan discussion for tonight. Then we'll move on to other business, which Rodney has asked for a few minutes to. Just kind of report and and bring some things to our attention.
Thank you. Just a couple of house key items. Lisa already mentioned the one that the Board of Trustees did adopt. The the new zoning ordinance with the list of changes that you recommended to them. That new ordinance will go into effect. On Monday, the 21st of September. That new ordinance, uh, will go into effect, uh, on Monday, uh, the 21st of September. The, uh, right now it's in the, it's in the waiting stage. The state law gives, uh, seven days for anyone to file a, basically follow a statement that they're going to seek to, to put, uh, ask for referendum on the ordinance that, that's just available and under for townships. But nobody has said they're going to do that. We have no expectation of that, but nonetheless, we have to wait the seven days from the date of publication, which was last Sunday. So on Monday, we'll have a new zoning ordinance in effect. Uh, we will be printing, printing the ordinance for you. So you can replace the ordinance document you have in your binders right now with a new one. So when, when those are ready, we, we'll let you know that they'll be available to be picked up at the hall. I expect that to be done in the, in the very near future, but, uh, exactly when we'll, we'll leave to, to the scheduling, uh, of getting that work done. So expect, expect to see an email, expect to, need to stop by the hall at some point to pick up a copy. If you can't come by the hall, uh, let us know and we'll, we'll make arrangements to get it to you. The, uh, the ordinance will also be available on the township website. If you can download a copy, if you'd like to do it that way. And we'll let you know in the email, uh, where to find that at that time. So the other item I have is that we, we have received two very recent site plan applications, uh, both of which, two different applicants, have, have requested, uh, special meeting of the planning commission to review, uh, those site plans. They, they did not arrive in time to be on this agenda. And they are preferring, they would like to have an answer from you before your regular October meeting. They are not right, uh, I'm not asking for anything, no, uh, uh, action tonight. Both site plans are right now under review by staff to can, basically looking at whether the application is complete and accurate and essentially ready for your review. That, that, uh, review will be, the staff review will be done, uh, in the next few days and, and then, uh, if, if an application is ready for re, re review, we'll, we'll honor their request by, by sending you an email and asking you to, to look at your calendar and, and see if there is a day that might be available for a special meeting. That will be up to you to, to decide and, and to let us know what dates will be available. What we'll essentially do is identify some potential dates and ask you simply to respond to those. Typically we do that through what's called a doodle poll, doodle.com site. It's easy to respond. So look for that email, um, and respond as you, as you see fit with, with regards to your availability. Uh, if there is no availability for a special meeting, obviously they, those items will go on the next regular agenda in October. So, well, I'd like to just look for an email, uh, probably next week, uh, with regards to any requests there might be for, if there is, if one of those applications is ready to go. Uh, those are the two items I had for you tonight, just to kind of give you a heads up.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners on those? So I guess I'll just, I'll go ahead and ask, um, so with these two, um, uh, site plan applications, um, is it just the, the normal course of, of when they showed up and this is where they are, that they didn't make, uh, the, this agenda for tonight, which was obviously a fairly light agenda? Or were there any extenuating circumstances that you're aware of that, uh, you know, interfered with their ability to have them be ready for tonight?
I, I am not aware of any extenuating circumstances. Uh, the, the, I think the primary reason for these requests is, is the coming winter weather and wanting to try to get work done, get foundations in so they can, they can do construction on the rest of the building, uh, and site over the winter months. But no, there are no other extenuating circumstances that related specifically to the projects.
Okay. And then I, you don't have to go into any detail, but would you, would you care, would you characterize these as, as, um, complicated plans or less complicated plans or somewhere in the middle?
Well, they're both, uh, they're both changes to existing sites. They're both, they both involve building additions, uh, to, to commercial, uh, existing commercial sites, building and, uh, parking or sidewalk additions, those sorts of things. But, but both of them are, they're, they're, they're not greenfield sites. They're not a brand new development. They're both changes to existing prior, uh, pre, previous developments.
Sounds like they could be on the simpler side, but, and, and is your, is your assumption that if we were to agree to a special meeting, that it would be one special meeting at which both would be done?
Absolutely. That I can guarantee. We will not do two special meetings separately for these. If, if we were to do one, it would, both of them would be on the same agenda.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the only other question would be, uh, which is just kind of leaked out of my head here. All right, I guess I've, literally leaked out of my head. I don't have anymore. Anything from anybody? Okay. All right. Well, watch, watch your mail for that and, and, we'll see, we'll see. Oh, I guess the question was going to be, um, what's the soonest that you think you'll have them cleared? To the point where we would be able to look at them. What kind, like, how much, they obviously don't want to wait till the third Tuesday in October, but how soon are they going to be able to, to get it? Without that?
I, I would not expect, um, anything over the last week of September or the first week of October. I think that might be the earliest timeframe potentially.
So we're looking at maybe they get two weeks.
Right.
Understanding that in this, in this climate, two weeks can be, can be significant weather wise. All right, um, so unless there are questions on that, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the next one, which is extended public comment. So if there's anybody who would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, we ask that you, uh, make yourself known to us, uh, and, uh, we'll recognize you, uh, for comments to, uh, be limited to five minutes on any issue. Uh, we just ask you to, uh, give us your name and address for the minutes and then, uh, provide your comment. So extended public comment is open at eight thirty seven.
So Mr. Mr. Mertz raised his hand. I have, I've asked him to unmute. So he, uh, Mr. Mertz, you'll need to unmute, uh, to speak.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Good. Um, well, first, um, I wanted to say thank you for the appointment. I'm, especially after all, all the talking you did about it, it sounds, I'm even more intrigued than I was before. So thank you very much for the appointment. I'm very, I'm interested to see how, how this, how this works out. And the other two comments I wanted to make quickly was, I'm, I was kind of surprised that, uh, the, being the planning commission and having, um, jurisdiction over that, there wasn't any discussion of, uh, there have been problems that with the university with the, um, large parties happening at some of the housing that's in Union Township. Um, Deerfield, I think is one. I'm surprised it wasn't even mentioned because I would think that you would have some jurisdiction over that, or it, it also seems like large apartment complex, student apartment complexes in the township can have a big party like that with somewhat impunity without, I would think there'd be some housing regulations that would say you shouldn't do this. That was the one thing I wanted to mention. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, of the, those comment about, uh, fraternities and parties. There was a series of articles about a year ago about the trouble they are having with certain fraternities, um, and it involved, uh, sexual assaults and that the university had closed down, um, a fraternity and a few years before that they closed down a fraternity and they did an article about what they called unaffiliated fraternities, which would basically be, um, they also called underground fratil, fraternities or rogue fraternities where the university no longer recognizes them as a fraternity. But they continue to operate anyway. The city has regulations that says that if a certain fraternity, and I'll use Delta Chi because it was one of the ones that was thrown out. The city says if the university doesn't recognize them, they cannot have a house in town, meaning you can't put up your big letters and do things. Of course you don't do that. You're not recognized, but you can't do that. And then the article went on to say, and the fraternities don't care because all they have to do is move to Union Township where there is no regulation and Delta Chi, for instance, which was closed down, I believe, five years ago, as of last year was still operating and they were operating with a house that was clearly labeled Delta Chi in Union Township. Because in Union Township, it's all right. You don't have to follow those regulations. I'm just something I wanted to point out that the city says you can't be a, this frat isn't supported and so we're not going to allow it, but the township, you can't. So I just wanted to bring up those two things about surprising the party thing wasn't talked about and to bring to your attention that a fraternity can freely operate, even though it's not even a recognized organization anymore. And again, thank you very much for the appointment. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments? I think Mr. Mertz was our audience, so I'm going to assume that there aren't, but we thank him for his comments. And so extended public comment is closed at eight forty two. Um, I guess I just want to, and so, uh, the next item is final board comment. So we'll kind of segue into that. So I'll ask Rodney, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware that the planning commission has any authority over, uh, parties in, I mean, those, that's, that's a, isn't that a, that's a, uh, what's the term I'm looking for? Police powers sort of thing?
And that is correct. It's, it's primarily a law enforcement issue. Um, it is also an enforcement issue through the university. The university has made clear their intent related to, uh, to, to large groups of, of students, uh, that, that are following the, the, the rules and what would happen to them potentially through suspensions. So, uh, those two enforcement actions I think are, are really probably the, the most important elements here where, where the, the, you know, the planning commission does not have a, a role in, in, in the party element. Certainly, uh, you have a role in mine use in terms of identifying where, uh, this type of housing should go. And that's how, you know, that, of course it's, it exists. It's been identified, property's been developed. But beyond that, it's, it really becomes a law enforcement challenge. Uh, we do have in the township rental housing regulations. Uh, we have, we have a rental inspector. Those, his job is not to regulate parties or regulate the tenants, uh, other than to make sure that they are, uh, maintaining, when he goes to an inspector property, maintaining exits properly and smoke alarms and all that sort of thing are, are in place. But our, our role in the township related rental housing is primarily to make sure that the housing itself is safe and properly maintained. Uh, we, we don't, we don't determine whether the behavior of the, of the tenants is safe or not.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't know, uh, I don't know the specific case that, that he was referring to with regard to the fraternity, but I do want to mention that, and, and I'm not sure Alex would, would also remember this, and I'm not sure if any of you were on the commission at that time. Stan might be the only other person. But maybe, gosh, five years ago or something, there was a, a group that applied and they wanted to set up a house down on Crawford. And Stan, I see Stan nodding his head and there was a, uh, you know, it was going to be a special use and, and we ended up recommending against the special use, as I recall. So, um, you know, those things, those do, those would have to come before us, at least in the, in the, in the stage of, of approving something like that. So other comments, uh, any other fa, final comments from board members? Make sure I'm looking at all of your faces here. Seeing none, it looks like you're, you're ready to, uh, move on to, to cocktail hour or whatever comes next after our meetings. So if not, we've, we've completed our agenda for tonight. So we'll stand in adjournment until our next meeting and watch your email for, uh, a doodle poll on the potential for a special meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Night, everybody.